So, thank you to all our speakers for joining. This session is called Special Session on Hydrogen Mission. And the speakers, the Chair Moderator for this session is Mr. The Chair for this session is Mr. K R Jyothilal, Additional Chief Secretary from Kerala, Government of Kerala and he has joined us virtually. He is there joining us online. We have our moderator for this session, Mr. Rajnath Ram, Advisor, Niti Ayog. And the speakers for this session is Mr. C P Tivari, Head Technology and Process Engineering, Generation Tata Power Company Limited. Mr. Derek M Shaaf, VP and Head LNT, he will be joining us any minute. And we have Ms. Nina Fenton, Head of Regional Representation of South Asia European Investment Bank. So, we will just quickly start with the remarks from our Chair, Mr. K R Jyothilal. Sir, I hope that you can hear us and I will just hand over the stage to Mr. Jyothilal.
No, it is clear, okay, okay. Yeah, thank you all. Thank you, maybe you will start showing the presentation from there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, you can go to the next slide. Yeah, this is, uh, uh, next slide, I think, second slide. Yeah, annually, India imports 6, 160 billion US dollar worth of oil and natural gas. And India is the biggest importer of green ammonia. So, that is a, that is a very good, maybe low hanging fruit is green ammonia. Roughly around 3 lakh tons, I think, we may require in the country. And we have got, India has got excellent RE resources. And if you see the solar, the, they are across the, maybe 360 days, the high EV penetration across India compared to maybe Germany, USA, that shows that India has got a good potential as far as the solar resources are concerned. Similarly, for the wind, if you see the variation across the year, I think it is quite, India has got a good, so, maybe good source of power from wind. Then if you see the cost of producing, maybe, maybe RE, renewable energy, then it is one of the lowest in the world. So, that is another great opportunity why India can go for a green hydrogen production. If you see that by the Bloomberg study, by 2025, I think, green, blue hydrogen and probably green hydrogen may be at par. And grey hydrogen, we may be able to meet, maybe make the green hydrogen at the same rate as that of a grey hydrogen by 2027. And which are the, India has got maybe the advantage of maybe exporting the lowest cost green hydrogen in the world. So, I think now recently, US has been telling that they can, they may be able to produce the lowest, but my rating is that we will be able to less, maybe we can achieve even less than $1 much earlier, though 2030 has been projected. Now, this is the national green hydrogen mission. Mr. Ram, Sri Ram is there from Niti Ayog, probably he will be elaborating on that. 5 million tons is minimum target. I am sure, I am sure that we will be able to even reach 10 million metric tons. And RE, no, 500 gigawatt is what Government of India has projected, out of which, I think, by 150, 125 gigawatt easily can be kept for green hydrogen. And the job, they have looked at various targets for fertilizer sector, green ammonia, then various projects for pilot projects and hubs across the state, as well as the regulation and standards and R and D as part of that. In fact, we have, we ourselves have prepared some projects for funding. For example, we have got, see, our, our target for EV was 1 million electric vehicle, out of which roughly around 3,000 were buses and 1,000 were trucks and 100 boats. Probably, we, we, in fact, the Hyas engines India has already developed, Prime Minister has recently launched the Hyas engine. There are BS4 engine, diesel ports and BS4 ports, any of the diesel or CNG engines can be converted into a Hyas engine at maybe 10 to 12 lakhs. Already it has been demonstrated. Similarly, they have done for trucks. So, this is a great opportunity for us to, for the transition as far as the buses and trucks are concerned. Then going for the boats, in fact, we are now, Cochin Shipyard is already making a fuel cell boat with KPAT. Then we are going for Hyas engine similarly on the water transport sector. We have got some 630 kilometers of national waterway from one end of Kerala to the other. So, then PRT is another concept, which you are working on it, how we can integrate even the existing KCB or electricity lines can be converted into structure so that the mobility needs of the, all these tire to cities can be met. And we can connect all the cities across the state using PRT and roughly around 450 tons of hydrogen will be required if you deploy 11,0400 boats from one end of Kerala to the other. And we don't need much land acquisition, that is a great, then it is one-fourth the cost of a normal metro line. So, another one is renewable potential. We have got a huge floating solar potential and 8,000 kilometers of canals. Roughly alone, 9 gigawatt is the potential from the RE, from the floating solar and the canal top, mounted on the canal tops. In fact, there is a, we have prepared the guideline for attracting private investment in this regard. And first 10 years, we are giving it nominal rate, almost one rupee a lease and next 10 years, some nominal lease of 1,000 rupees like that. We have prepared the policy, now it is gone for cabinet approval, it is in the process. So, then pumped storage is another thing because daytime we have got solar and how do you make use of it so that we can, grid balancing will be, will not be an issue. We will have power throughout for the electrolyser to be 100% efficient. So, that pumped storage roughly around 11 gigawatt, we have estimated, now NSPC, Tiree Corporation, all of them are shown interest in investing. So, that is another great opportunity, how best we can use it for a green hydrogen generation. Then Kerala has already announced that we want to be carbon neutral by 2050 and 100% RE by 2040. So, we have prepared action plan for each of the sectors to become 100% RE and carbon neutral. So, shipping is another area which is, has huge potential. In fact, green ammonia is a low, low hanging fruit and then go for liquid hydrogen in the long run. That is there, we need to have standards for what is said, the only one is liquefaction, second is you need to have hydrogen tangos to be developed in India and ships also should be, what is manufactured. That is there, Cochin Shipyard is already in touch with Kawasaki, McDermott and all. And companies like Jet or Go and Chart and all have shown interest in liquefaction using the gold energy from LNG. Then refineries, already Government of India has put a plan that, you know, now Bena has been, BPCL has the first phase. Probably the other refineries, they might be going for a green hydrogen. At present, they are using air products, 140 tons per day is their capacity to produce from the grey hydrogen, but I think slowly they will be going for that. Then fertilizer, as I said, F A C T is there where they need 82 tons per day. And aviation is another area which is working, sustainable aviation fuel, we can make it from the green hydrogen. Already I A T, Madras, BPCL and Cochin International Airport, which is the world's first solar airport in the entire world, I think they are working on it. So, we should be able to generate, maybe indigenously develop this half. Then another important thing is, you know, we have got a lot of biomass as well as feed gas, which is available in plenty in Alappi district. So, I A T Madras has given a proposal to make it 2 tons per day of hydrogen. Basically, they make it to carb, it is a turquoise hydrogen in another way. There is a hydrogen plus the other one, there are no emissions, the carbon is taken as carbon black. So, the methane is converted into hydrogen and carbon black and carbon black itself is a good market. And 3 ton, 4 tons of ammonia plant based on the solar and bio, biogenic hydrogen resources, which is available. Then I R E, which is Indian rarest, you know, we have got a huge thorium deposit, which we can use it for power generation and probably green hydrogen from that. And in fact, I R E is working with us. So, we are in the process of setting up maybe, maybe hydrogen generation as well as power generation from that. I think this, I think I will skip it, most of you will be knowing, maybe G and D laws, we are one of the lowest in the entire country with less than 8%. So, and this solar potential also, I have already covered, renewable, you know, we have got a very good potential. In fact, we tied up with Norwegian company Worldwide Wind for floating windmills in the sea. That is another source apart from maybe tidal and wave, which is also there throughout the day. Then this is a, what are the unique advantage? We have got enough, you see, out of 3,000 TMC of water, we use only 300 TMC and very good rainfall is there and solar penetration is also quite good and nearness to refinery is another plus point for Kerala. And so, significant solar, floating solar potential, I said, you know, we have got 60 reservoirs and if we use even 10% of it, around 5,000 megawatt, we can generate, I think we have, the guidelines is in the final stage for approval to attract investment. Then we are, we are a front runner because it is maybe cleanest and greenest state in the country. We already, we started Cochin Airport, Cochin, Cochi Metro has already called the bid for 10 hydrogen fuel cell buses as a feeder. We are going for 10 hydrogen fuel cell boats in the waterway. Then hydrogen valleys are proposed along the DST and pilot projects with the fuel cell is already sanctioned and in fact, then partnerships with countries like Netherlands, Germany etc. are being tied up. These are the key drivers, why refinery, ammonia production, methanol and transport and heat, which is available in, in Cochi, not around Cochi. And these are the sites, actually, we have earmarked something around 300 cores for developing economic corridors in the national waterway so that the fuel cell, now what is a hydrogen fueling stations can be set up in the national waterway. Then this is one unique project, maybe a single largest fleet of 76 water metro boats, which is Alstrom coach, which can carry 100 passengers in air conditioned coach with, using LTO bat, actually, it is electric ferry, which is running on LTO bat. Now, we are trying to replace it with the fuel cell and next stage, we will go for a Hyas engine so that your right side, you can see bottom, you can see the buses and which I think Reliance is built with converting the diesel or CNG engine into Hyas. So, I think the same model we will be trying and probably under single command and control, this may be the largest fleet of, what is a zero emission vehicles, which you would like to deploy during the G20 Shapa meeting in Kumaragam on the 30th of this month. And Cochi International Airport, as I said, you know, is the world's single largest, maybe the first zero emission airport in the world. I think now they are going for this half project. Then what are the advantages? Vilnium International Seaport is maybe transport hub for India. Then Cochin Port is there, Petronet is there, so where the gold energy of LNGK is available for liquefaction. Then I think the, which are the ongoing projects is one is Green Hydrogen Hub with all these India Hydrogen, Hydrogen Alliance has come forward to set up something around 150 megawatt, megawatt of electrolyser and 60 ton liquefaction unit. Win Corporation on a PPP mode and we, in fact, the state government also announced 2 billion, now that means around 200 cores in the, in the recent budget for funding, you know, VGF for, for taking equity in the hub. Then Hydrogen Valleys, we are working on with DST and I A T, Palcart and all other maybe stakeholders. Then global corporation, already I said, the one MO with Rotterdam is there, then I think similarly, we are working with Germany so that Hamburg port, we can, we can learn from them at the same time, we can explore the potential for future export to these countries. Yeah, then feed gas, I mentioned, that is a huge, maybe as per I A T Madras, the proposal which is now pending before for sanction, it is, they will be able to generate hydrogen at 60 rupees per kg. Maybe the compression cost and other cost will be extra, but the cost of production will be only 60 rupee, that might be less than $1. Then thorium based reactor ASMR, then for cheapest power phone, maybe next 100 years is another project, which you are working with Department of Heating and Energy and I R E. Then other this, maybe this is basically a comprehensive RE policy and the green hydrogen policy, we are in the process. In fact, this are the draft policy, which we have now circulated for getting comments from all stakeholders. We will give open access and then banking for 30 days and then maybe wheeling charges and interstate charges, transportation, some 50% discount and cross city such charge will be waived. Then floating solar, I already covered. The land banks, we have set up something, setting up land banks across the state for investment in the green energy. WIBL TGA funding some 200 cores, we have kept a port. Apart from, we have got a high level committee, which can maybe single window clearance for supporting that. This is in actual is what we are, we are planning in Kerala to make it a heavy hydrogen up of the country. Thank you for giving an opportunity, probably we would like to listen to others. Thank you.
We will be now moving ahead and I would like to call onstage Mr. Rajnath Ram, Advisor, Energy, Niti Ayog to, you know, for moderation of the session. I would also like to call Mr. C P Tivari, Head Technology and Process Engineering, Generation Tata Power Company Limited on DIAS. Welcome, sir. And we have Ms. Nina Fenton, Head of Regional Representation for South Asia European Investment Bank. So, and now I would like to hand over the stage to Mr. Rajnath Ram for, you know, taking the session forward. But before that, I would like to ask Mr. Jyothilal if he would like to stay with us on call or is it better if we go back on our online platform, sir?
Let me thank Mr. Jyothilal for setting the context and he has already provided the brief details about the action plan and the strategy for the states, how they are moving ahead and Kerala being the most progressive state, they have taken number of initiative towards the energy transition as well as the achieving the Honorable Prime Minister vision of green hydrogen. So, so, let me put up some brief context and the policy perspective that what the government has come out in the recent past on the green hydrogen mission. You know, the, putting up little bit, brief history also, when Honorable Prime Minister announced during his Independence Day speech in 2020. So thereafter, we started the work with the respective ministries and Niti Ayog made a presentation before Honorable Prime Minister, the broad objective, how to move ahead and, and then at the same time, doing the interministerial consultation with the respective agencies and the ministries to put forward the hydrogen mission for the country. And then MNRE from there took it forward, they did lot of consultations with the respective agencies, the stakeholders and through the interministerial consultations, so this final green hydrogen mission has come into shape. See, the original idea started when, with the context that India is already consuming around 9 to 10% of hydrogen in the form of grey, grey hydrogen of the total, total global demand. So, idea was to go forward with the context that if the existing grey hydrogen can be replaced with the green hydrogen, that will provide a substantial demand for the existing industries. And accordingly, the draft trajectory were also proposed for the refineries as well as the fertilizer sector because they are the, they are almost 5.6 million ton, they are consuming grey hydrogen in their respective units. But it was also later on felt that these industries also need lot of support from the government side in terms of incentive etc. And the refineries particularly, they made a huge investment towards the diesel hydro desulfurization unit. So, they were finding little bit difficult to implement this strategy over the implementation on green hydrogen. Accordingly, later on, it was thought that, that why not to keep some very modest or moderate target for the consumption obligation part. But still that part has to be taken care because there is a empowered group that they will decide what would be the percentage obligations to these industries. But the, coming out with the national policy on the green hydrogen, the mission broadly categorized into two, three parts, which includes the electrolyser manufacturing as a one component. The another is again the providing some kind of incentive towards the green hydrogen production and third of course, the promoting the research and development activities within the countries. So, these were the, I mean, three broad objective under which the entire structure was created. But still, I think the work in progress and the final notification are yet to come from the Ministry of New and Urban Energy. And the overall budget size, you might be knowing that is roughly ranging around 19,700, around 700 crore, the overall size of budget provision for the promoting the green hydrogen within the country. And with this, I think already lot of initiatives by the different agencies in terms of electrolyser manufacturing and also putting up some of the project on ground and pilot scale, a lot of discussions and lot of activities are already undertaken by the various agencies because they see that some of the sectors like hard to abate sector, they are very difficult to decarbonize and the green hydrogen could be one possible solution for decarbonize this sector. So, with that objective, the, with the overall framework has been created and I am sorry, the initial target we have kept at the 5 million ton by 2030, but I think this will create an ecosystem of more than, more than 10 million ton. I mean, that is the kind of demand we are expecting. And a lot of geopolitical interactions is also happening and a lot of countries have shown their keen interest to work with the, with the India to set up their plants here, the work in a collaborative framework within the organization and institution within the country on the green hydrogen thing. So, so, this is the overall background, as I was just wanted to put before the audience. But let me, let me, I have very esteemed panelist here. So, let me introduce the panelist. I have Mr. Chandr Pukash Tivari, he is a Head of Technology and Process Engineering, Generation from Tata Power Company Limited. So, welcome him. And I have Ms. Nina Fenton, the Head of Regional Representation of, for South Asia on the European Investment Bank. I think Mr. Shah is, I think somehow he is not able to make it. Okay, so, with these two panelists, let me start with the Mr. Mr. Tivari. So, you have seen that the government is very keen to work.
Sir, I have a presentation, if you can allow, I can go.
Yeah, 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 I am, I am sure.
I will summarize your mission also in that.
Sure, sure, sure. Welcome.
Hello? Is it, okay? So, thank you, sir. Thank you Raj sir and thank you Jyothi sir for setting up the context. I will go little reverse because we, here we are trying to talk about hydrogen mission, but I also want to touch upon hydrogen. What is hydrogen? Why hydrogen is being talked today? And so, in first part of my talk, I will cover basic about hydrogen and maybe in the second part, I have summarized what are the mission recommendations and what are the other action which is to be taken at government level to really make sure that whatever mission objectives are there, those can be achieved. So, in first part, I will cover basic about hydrogen, green hydrogen, what are the basic fact? Why green hydrogen is required? Role of green hydrogen in achieving net zero? So, certainly, green hydrogen is one energy vector, which, which is likely to contribute significantly, in a significant way for achieving net zero, especially for hard to abate sector, where we cannot use directly electricity. And then what is green hydrogen equivalence? Because everybody is talking about million metric ton. So, for a common public, what is million metric ton? What, what 1 million metric ton or, I have divided that to a smaller unit. What 1 lakh metric ton of hydrogen mean for transport sector, for making urea, for refining sector? So that we can understand that in 5 million metric ton, how it is going to translate and decarbonize this sector? Then I will also talk about the cost economics of green hydrogen, how the cost of green hydrogen look like and what are the different technologies for green hydrogen? What type of technological intervention and breakthrough is happening across the globe? To achieve 111 target means $1 per kg of hydrogen in one decade, that is the target what everybody is taking. So, what, what in that, for achieving that target, we need to do lot of work on renewable energy part wherein we, we need to bring down the cost of renewable energy. At the same time, we also do lot of work on electrolyser part, on improving the efficiency of electrolyser and bringing down the cost of electrolyser and increasing the life of electrolyser. So, I have tried to cover those aspects also in my first part of the presentation. In second part, I have briefly covered national hydrogen mission, which Raj sir and Jyothi sir has already touched upon. So, I will try to rush through on the second part. So, so, hydrogen is not new to the industry. In fact, hydrogen was identified in, back in 1776. And some interesting fact about hydrogen, like hydrogen is colorless, but industry has given name to the hydrogen. Though it is colorless, but industry has given name to the hydrogen, different color, based on the method of production, like if hydrogen is, and they have, it is categorized in three category, high, high carbon hydrogen, low carbon hydrogen and zero carbon hydrogen. In case hydrogen is produced from methane or natural gas, then it is called grey hydrogen and carbon intensity of this hydrogen is 9 to 10 kg per kg of hydrogen. If hydrogen is produced from coal, then it is called brown hydrogen and CO2 intensity for this pathway is very high. It is around 19 to 20 kg of CO2 per kg of hydrogen. So likewise, there is a low carbon. Suppose you are producing hydrogen by methane or by natural gas or by coal and you are capturing the CO2, then it is called blue hydrogen. You may not be able to capture 100% CO2 and that is why here again, the CO2 intensity will be to the tune of 2 to 4 kg per kg of hydrogen. And then there are zero carbon hydrogen, in which turquoise is there, green hydrogen is there and then pink hydrogen, what people are talking today about, small modular reactor, fusion nuclear technology. So, all these technologies is being talked. So, in fact, you can use nuclear energy and produce hydrogen and use it. Other thing is like hydrogen density. Hydrogen density is very low because it is very lighter gas and if you will compare the density of hydrogen with air density, so it is 1/14 of the air density. And at atmospheric pressure, it is in gaseous form. If, if we want to convert hydrogen into liquid form, then we have to cool down to minus to 53 degrees centigrade. As far as heat value of hydrogen is concerned, heat value of hydrogen, energy content of hydrogen per kg is the highest among the available different type of fuel, be it petrol, diesel, gaseous liquid and if you will, if you will talk and if you will try to see the energy content per kg, so it, it will be the highest one. But the challenge is because of low density, we are not able to transport, we are not able to store and that is where lot of work is going on. 1 kg of hydrogen will require 9 kg of water also. We have to be mindful that with the, for hydrogen, we will requiring huge quantity of water and that is why lot of talk is there, how we can arrange that type of water. If we want to see the entire value chain of hydrogen. If we want to see the entire value chain of hydrogen is, it consists of production technologies. There are some thermochemical technologies which I have already explained that by producing by methane or natural gas or coal. So these are the mature technologies and water electrolysis, though it is also a mature technologies, it has been used since ages. And I, I come from thermal power plant background and in our power plant also, we have used these electrolyzer bay bike twenty, thirty years, those are operating. But those are at kilowatt scale and now we are talking about gigawatt scale electrolyzer. Those are very expensive and here we are, maybe at that time we have taken those electrolyzer as two hundred dollar, two thousand dollar per kilowatt. But here we are targeting to achieve a value of three hundred or two fifty dollar per kilowatt. And similarly, supply and logistic, most of the hydrogen what is being presently used in the industry in bulk quantity, those are being produced near the user point. So we don't have a proper infrastructure for transportation of hydrogen or storage. For that matter, storage is also not required in a huge quantity. So this, here also lot of work is going. And then end use application, as Raj sir has already said, suppose I want to use hydrogen for refining purpose. So what I'll do with the equipment, with the plant which I have already installed for producing the brown hydrogen. And likewise, suppose I want to make green urea. So in green urea making, I need to change entire process because whatever hydrogen they are using, I will not be directly able to inject hydrogen, green hydrogen for making green urea. So last, lot of investment is required and that's why people are talking of new sector where green hydrogen is to be promoted, especially for hard to abate sector, which I'll cover in the subsequent slide. If you will see the end use application, so usually we talk about P to P, P to G or P to X or P to C. So there are two type of green hydrogen application. P to P means I'll use power for producing green hydrogen and then again I'll use that hydrogen as energy storage and then I'll again produce the power. But the challenge is that the round trip efficiency of this process is very low, only thirty-three percent. So maybe if you are giving one unit of electricity for producing hydrogen and then again converting that hydrogen into electricity, you will get only point three three. So, so that's why what we believe especially for India, where the seasonal variation is not very high and we don't expect the energy storage for intra day or week. So this, this will take time on a long term basis, maybe by two thousand forty, when long duration energy storage will be required for our grid, then in that case even we may consider low round trip efficiency also for energy, energy storage application. So in near term, we don't see that other than replacing fuel at fuel location, DG set and all those where we are using very expensive power, we may not use green hydrogen for power to power application in near term. And other application could be the power to gas or power to chemical in which we are talking about mobility, highway duty, long haul mobility which Raj sir has already talked, then refining, then green steel making. This is also an area because we don't have much alternative for decarbonizing the steel making process. So lot of work is going on and to be very frank, the technologies for green steel making is not yet matured and lot of study and research is going on. Then green ammonia, we already talked about and in fact, mission document also talked about making green ammonia because India is importing close to six billion US dollar ammonia and urea from other countries. So, so that's why they, they are talking about putting of green fertilizer plant also in first phase. Then methanol production and building heating may not be very much relevant for India. Cooling, people are talking and in this seminar also, district cooling is being talked up. Then blending of hydrogen in natural gas. So that is also an option which everybody is talking today. These are again the hydrogen production method I have already explained, so I'll not again repeat. Then how the hydrogen is produced presently? Globally, around seventy-six percent hydrogen is produced from natural gas, twenty-three from coal and maybe less than one percent from other sources like electrolyzer. If I'll talk about electrolyzer install capacity, today we are talking of putting of a gigawatt scale electrolyzer. But till last year, only five hundred megawatt electrolyzer were installed globally. So from five hundred to gigawatt like mission document talk about putting sixty, sixty-five gigawatt of electrolyzer by two thousand thirty. So in terms of business growth, there is a huge business opportunity in green hydrogen value chain. So net zero, because the theme of this conference is also net zero. So what I tried to capture that, what are the greenhouse gas emission from different sources? So if you see, the maximum greenhouse gas emission is from power sector around forty-two percent. Transport contribute around twelve percent, steel around eleven percent, chemical around nine percent, building six percent and others, other industries around twenty percent. What here, what I wanted to explain that in all, all these CO2 emitting or greenhouse gas emitting industries, hydrogen has some role for decarbonization. Like, like in case of power, I have already explained that when renewable percentage in grid will increase and we may require intra day storage or weekly energy storage solution, in that case hydrogen will play a role. Likewise, in transportation, maybe for short haul transportation, maybe hydrogen may not be able to compete with battery electric vehicle. But when we will talk about long haul transportation system, highway duty transportation system, then certainly hydrogen is competitive based on today only. Only challenge is how quickly we can build the infrastructure for hydrogen dispensing, for hydrogen refueling and how we can create the scale in vehicle manufacturing so that cost of fuel cell electric vehicle can come down. So far, nobody could discover that what is the real cost of fuel cell electric vehicle because there is no scale in the industry. Likewise, in chemical making, people are talking about making methanol and some other sustainable aviation fuel, then building heating. So these are, in all these sector, wherever in case, we want to do the decarbonization, hydrogen has a role and it will certainly play. So this, I was talking about hydrogen equivalence. In country, we are talking of five million metric ton. But one million metric ton is a huge quantity and that's why for the purpose of explanation, I have taken one lakh metric ton. So what one lakh metric ton of hydrogen means? In refining sector, one lakh metric ton of hydrogen means refining around ten million metric ton of oil. So you, and which is around four percent of the total oil consumption in India. So for the purpose of understanding, if I want to use one lakh metric ton of hydrogen for fuel cell vehicle, then it can power to one point six million passenger vehicle to run on hydrogen. This I have calculated considering twelve hundred kilometer run in each month. If I'll talk about power generation, it will generate one point seven billion unit of power, which is one point five percent, around one point five percent of the total power consumption in India. If I'll talk about methanol, then one lakh metric ton of green hydrogen can produce zero point five million metric ton of methanol, okay? Which is around twenty percent of the methanol consumption in India. Likewise, urea and steel also I have mentioned. So here I'll talk about cost of green hydrogen. If I'll see the entire green hydrogen value chain, then how the cost will look like? So major cost element in green hydrogen production is RERTC. Renewable energy is the major cost component which is around seventy percent. And balance thirty percent is all other thing. So everybody is trying to focus on thirty percent part. But what we personally believe that until unless there is a breakthrough in renewable energy technologies and if, if there, until unless there is really some drastic change in the cost of renewable energy technology, again, it is very difficult and which I'll explain in subsequent slide also. This is again the breakup of the green hydrogen generation plant. The major cost component is electrolyzer stack. And if I'll see the stack, then major cost component is the electrode package. This is, which is the heart of the electrolyzer system. This is the cost sensitivity because everybody is talking that when cost of green hydrogen will come down to less than two dollar per kg. So this hydrogen council has done this study and we have also internally done calculation and we have found that until unless your cost of hydrogen generation plant, which is presently around thousand dollar per kilowatt or eleven hundred, two hundred, twelve hundred also, it depends on what is your scale. If you are talking of say five hundred megawatt plant, then your cost may come down to nine hundred, eight hundred also. But the scale which people are talking forty, fifty megawatt, so their cost is more than thousand dollar per kilowatt. And so when the cost of hydrogen generation plant will come down to less than two fifty dollar or three hundred dollar and cost of renewable energy will come down to less than twenty dollar per megawatt hour, then you will be able to achieve this magic figure of less than two dollar per kg of hydrogen. Then this is brief about electrolyzer technologies. Lot of people are talking about alkaline, which is already very much matured. Then PM where TRL level is more than eight, nine. So this is also under mature category. But there is a lot of scope in design optimization for PM electrolyzer. Then also solid oxide electrolyzer and then one more AM electrolyzer, then membrane less, lot of, lot of electrolyder design is being discussed and these are some of the technical features of this. This is again the architecture of how the electrolyzer look like. I'll not spend much time here. So, so how we can bring down the cost of hydrogen generation plant from say present thousand dollar per kilowatt to less than three hundred dollar per kilowatt? So lot of research is going on and if I'll talk about alkaline electrolyzer, so these are the likely changes which will happen in next ten, twenty year to bring down the cost of entire system like, like current density. They are talking of bringing, increasing current density in alkaline electrolyzer more than two ampere per centimeter. So these are the changes which people are talking. But again, these changes are, suppose, suppose I want to increase the current density, then I have to increase the diffram thickness, then again my resistance will increase, then my efficiency will come down. So these factor are relate, one factor is related to other and that's why the researcher has to do a very careful selection so that we don't compromise on efficiency, we don't compromise on life of the component. At the same time, we reduce the capital cost, so that is our ultimate goal. Likewise, this we wanted to explain because suppose India want to make electrolyzer in India. So, so what are the raw material required for alkaline electrolyzer and what is the value, from where we will getting these material? So if you see the alkaline electrolyzer, so most of the material is available within India except the nickel and in any case, whatever nickel we are using in the country that is imported and major nickel consumption is for making stainless steel. So even if we are going for electrolyzer manufacturing, I mean, electrolyzer will not be the driving factor for nickel in future also. So we, as, as such, we are not very much dependent on China supply chain, especially for alkaline electrolyzer. Similarly, this is a comparison of PM electrolyzer, what, what is there in two thousand twenty and what we want to achieve in two thousand fifty. And how we will be achieving, this is the roadmap. We are talking of increasing current density. We are talking of increasing the electrode area because in PM electrolyzer, electrode area is very small. We are talking of increasing stack size, already stack size, two point five megawatt stack size is already available. So we are trying to make it to ten megawatt or more. Then reducing the membrane thickness from one twenty-five microns to less than twenty micron. So these are design changes for reducing the cost of electrolyze. If I'll talk about raw material required for PM electrolyzer, so here platinum group material is required, platinum, iridium, this type of material is required. And as such, if you'll see the reserve of these platinum group material is in African country. But we need to really see if Chinese companies are also buying those mines because there is a very less production of platinum and iridium globally. And, and that's why lot of research is going on how we can reduce the platinum and iridium loading of in these electrolyzers. Say presently, point three kg per megawatt platinum is used and point seven kg per megawatt iridium is used. So people are talking of reducing these metal loading to one tenth of present level. What technology we can really do so that we can really reduce this cost? Then this is my second part of the presentation and this is mostly, I have taken input from the National Hydrogen Energy Mission which has been released by Government of India. So these are the target, we have already top five hundred gigawatt non-fossil, fifty percent install capacity from non-fossil, reducing emission intensity of GDP forty-five percent, energy independence by forty-seven, two thousand forty-seven and net zero by two thousand seventy. Union Cabinet approved National Hydrogen Mission on fourth January two thousand twenty-three and MNRE released finally Green Hydrogen Mission Document on thirteenth of January. Before that, in February two thousand twenty, Green Hydrogen Policy was also announced by Government of India, that is also one of the main enabler for green hydrogen economy. So National Green Hydrogen Mission talks about these sector, refining, fertilizer, iron and steel, bulk chemical. Then in energy carrier, they are talking of energy storage, blending with natural gas, long haul mobility and shipping industry, which I have already talked in previous slide also. It also talk about demand creation, like, like how government will facilitate so that we can develop the export market, we can compete with other countries for exporting to countries where there is less natural resources or less renewable potential like Japan, Korea, in all those are European country. So for that, they are talking about hub and other things. Then substituting import, what I have already talked that we are importing urea and ammonia. So how we can make urea and ammonia using green hydrogen so that we can avoid those import? Then domestic demand creation, a lot of work needs to be done here because everybody was expecting that in mission document itself, they will give mandate of minimum use of green hydrogen in different industry, but that is not given and there is an empowered group which is working on mandate. So until unless we will really create domestic demand, I mean, be like, then some strategic invention, then electrolyzer, then direct financial incentive for electrolyzer manufacturing, green, green hydrogen production, Raj saw, has already explained. And total minimum domestic demand, we are estimating five million ton, metric ton per annum. And total production including export could range to five to ten and it go to fifteen also considering the export demand. Because what, what mission says that global demand for green hydrogen is likely to be around hundred million metric ton and India should be able to capture minimum ten percent. So ten percent for export and five percent for domestic. So we are targeting for fifteen million metric ton of green hydrogen production in India. So the, these are the major component of Green Hydrogen Mission. One is the compliance monitoring, how the entire process will be monitored, that is defined. Then competitive bidding for procurement, aggregating demand and then competitive bidding guideline. Then domestic manufacturing of green fertilizer, I have already talked because India is importing urea and ammonia. So in first phase itself, mission document says that they will come out for bidding of two numbers, green fertilizer plant. And then the mission also says that whatever green hydrogen policy was announced in February two thousand twenty, that is to be implemented. Then there, lot of work is going on, on regulation, courts and standard, research and development, like somebody was talking that what is the green, what is the green hydrogen? There should be definition of green hydrogen based on the method of production, based on CO, CO2 emission intensity. So lot of work is going on and MNR is taking input from industry also from, by, through different industry body. And once those stand, everybody is trying to align these standards with international because finally we may have to import, export also green hydrogen. So it should be compatible with the European and other standard also. Then this is the pilot project, every industry is looking that what type of incentive will be provided for these pilot project. And especially these pilot project are in those sector where technology is not very much matured, like, like, like use of green hydrogen in fertilizer and refinery. It can be anytime use because it's a plug and play, especially in forty- Especially in fertilizer, NPK fertilizer, not urea where you can directly use green hydrogen. But like shipping, like transport, like green steel making, where the use of hydrogen itself is not very much matured. So there we are, the mission document talks about promoting the pilot project. It also talk of, talks about setting up two numbers green hydrogen hub. In different forum, more number of hub is also being discussed. And at, in state policies also, people are talking promoting the setting of a green hydrogen hub. These are the key enablers of what, what is defined in Green Hydrogen Mission, like resources, renewable energy, banking and storage. Lot of, lot of people are talking like you produce solar power in daytime, bank in the grid and use in nighttime for production of green hydrogen. But we have to be mindful that ultimately grid is not a storage until unless we create the storage in grid itself. There could be, if every state will give banking, then how we will control the grid, how we will control the frequency of grid. So those type of challenges are there. Having said that, states are announcing for monthly banking with some condition that you cannot withdraw energy during peak hours and like that. Likewise, so some state has already announced, some state are, in some state, these policies are under formulation and consultation stage. Then it also talk about infrastructure and supply chain, like port, refueling station, hydrogen hubs, pipeline. So lot of talk is going on and different ministries are working. And I think few days back, Prime Minister has already taken a review with different ministries and that also I, I'll cover about what has been talked about green hydrogen. Then RND, regulation and standard, ease of doing business, skill development, public awareness. There is an initial outlet, our outlet of nineteen thousand seven hundred something. So and the breakup is like this. Seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety crores for site program. This is mainly for the electrolyte manufacturing and some incentive in hydrogen production. What, what will be the framework for dispersing those incentive that is still being worked out? And we expect a detailed green hydrogen policy document after this mission document that how these financial incentive will be implemented in industry. Then around fourteen hundred and sixty, six crore is earmark for pilot project, four hundred crore is for RND and three eighty-eight crore towards other mission component. We have to be mindful that here, if I'll try to compare what type of incentive US government is giving for green, green energy and green hydrogen. So as compared to IRA or US incentive, it is peanut because they are talking of hundred billion dollar, ninety billion, hundred billion dollar of incentive for green. But here it is small, but still you see we have good, presently say, cost of green hydrogen in USA is six dollar per kg production. In India at present level also, if we are able to set up megawatt scale green hydrogen generation plant, we will be able to achieve less than five dollar, around four, five dollar somewhere, even less than that also. So of course there, because of their labor charges, their raw material cost and all those, their cost of setting up plant is very high. Whereas our is less and so we expect that with lower incentive also, we will be able to compete with them. These are the expected deliverables by National Green Hydrogen Mission. We expect at least five million metric ton, it can go to fifteen million metric ton also. We expect sixty to hundred gigawatt of electrolyte capacity, one twenty-five gigawatt of HARI capacity for hydrogen generation, one lakh crore shaving, import shaving, whatever fuel, fossil fuel we are importing or urea or ammonia we are importing. And fifty million metric ton of annual emission CO2 reduction, six lakh crore job and eight lakh crore investment. That is, that translate to around hundred billion dollar. Yeah. This is the mission governance framework. There is an empowered group chaired by Cabinet Secretary, which will be mandating that what should be the minimum use of green hydrogen by each industry and they have defined that each of group, how they will function. Then already these, these are the action which has already been initiated, like policy incentive, standards, lot of work is going on, standard, research and development, demand aggregation. For demand aggregation, MNRE has already released one draft model bidding guideline and which is under finalization. Then pilot project, then international cooperation. What is expected as per mission timeline, what, what action are required in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five? Next two year, I tried to focus very near term. So two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, we expect that market review for site, roadmap for key pilot project hub, finalization of procedure for regulatory approval of pilot project, formulation of RND project. So they have defined that what is to be done till two thousand thirty in fact. And what are the other action required? Because in last meeting, which was chaired by Power Minister, this Prime Minister and later on, industry has also given lot of suggestion on National Green Hydrogen Mission. And Power Secretary, MNRE Secretary has shared these detail to Power Minister also that what industry want to ensure that whatever is being targeted in National Hydrogen Mission, that is achieved by country. So these I have tried to bucket in four, five categories. In policy and regulatory intervention, main, main thing is obligation for domestic demand. Like you have to say that refinery has to use minimum ten percent green hydrogen, like we have given green power obligation. Then relaxation in open access charges, provision of banking up to two thousand thirty, extension of ISV, TS charges. Presently IS TS charges waiver is available for renewable energy to be used for green hydrogen, but that is up to two thousand twenty-five. So that is to be extended because we believe that by two thousand twenty-five, we may not be able to put up megawatt scale, gigawatt scale, a green hydrogen generation plant. Then provision of carbon market to increase green hydrogen use, facilitate central and government agency approval so that in any case, it is covered in the mission document, but how it is to be implemented because people says that there is a single window, but once you enter into the window, then there are multiple window. So how we can convert those multiple window into single window? And so that point was raised by the industry also. In fiscal and financial intervention, industry raise about concessional GST for green hydrogen is derivative. RE to be covered through to GST, then priority sector lending for green hydrogen. Green hydrogen and its related EPC projects will be included in harmonized list of infrastructure project. Provision of accelerated depreciation was also talked like it was a RE project, like bin project. Then in terms of standard and regulation, life cycle assessment toolkit to enable estimation of emission, like, like how we can say that per kg of hydrogen, either I'll allow one kg, two kg or three kg. So that there should be some toolkit for proper estimation of CO2 emission in green hydrogen production by different pathways. Then this, people also talk about RND incentive scheme and then hydrogen, for hydrogen development of hydrogen hub, what additional action is required or what additional support is required from government? So that's all from my side on National Green Hydrogen Mission and basic about green hydrogen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chandpakas Tivari. You have presented very detailed overview of the green hydrogen strategy for the country. You have covered all the aspect, starting from the, from the RE power till the supply chain. So thank you very much. Now I'll turn my to Ms. Nina Fenton, who is the head of regional representation of, representation of South Asia, European Investment Bank. So Madam, over to you, your perspective, please.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And you know, it's, it's a real honor to be here on behalf of EIB. We're the Bank of the European Union. And I think to be honest, Mr. Jotilal and also Mr. Tivari have really, you know, laid out the vision and they make a very, very convincing case. I don't think anyone here needed to be convinced, but they, they really convinced us again. And also Mr. Tivari has really given us a masterclass in many of the technical aspects as well. So I will, I will just try to touch on a few points from the European perspective and here as a financier. So you know, I don't need to make the case, you know, in general for green hydrogen, but from the European perspective, right? We really see the strong potential of, of India. We see the renewable energy resources that you have and we see the efficiency with which you've developed those, right? So the progress that we've seen on, on solar power over the past few years has been very, very impressive and we see that India can really achieve a lot. And that's something, you know, by drawing on those resources to create green hydrogen, it's something that's going to support India's own domestic strategic autonomy and help India to reduce its own emissions, which is something that is very much in the interests of the EU because of course, carbon emissions don't stop at borders. But also, you know, of course, we hope that in Europe, perhaps we will be able to purchase some of this, this green hydrogen and also benefit in other ways from this ambitious strategy. For example, you know, I know it was mentioned, the diversification of supply chain. So you know, we've seen what has happened, for instance, in the solar energy industry with, you know, supply chains becoming very, very much concentrated. And I think it's really great to see the vision of the Indian government in ensuring that that's not the case. And that's something that's in all of our interests. And that's why I think the European Union and member, many of the EU member states are really getting behind this National Hydrogen Mission. And of course, we are the EU bank, we're fully owned by the member states and we're here to promote EU objectives to the extent that they overlap with those of our partners, for example, in India. So that's why we're here and we want to get behind the hydrogen mission. And you know, my vice president was here just a couple of weeks ago and he said very clearly, he gave a couple of interviews even. And he said, you know, we would be very pleased to be able to contribute financially to the strategy as a financier. He mentioned the figure of, of one billion euros, you know, as a sort of starting point of what we can, what we can commit. India is already a very important partner for us. We have invested, I think, around five billion already, mainly in renewable energy and, and urban mobility. And we would be very keen to also get behind green hydrogen because this is also an area where we've built considerable expertise in, inside the EU. We've invested over two billion and you know, at the start, these were small pilot projects. But now, you know, we have a pipeline of over six billion there where we're seeing it, you know, being solutions that are starting to, to move towards scale. And I think it's an industry that is moving very, very quickly. So you know, we really hope to be part of, part of this in, in India. So what can our finance do? Actually, what are the areas where, you know, we talk about one billion potentially, where, where would we think to intervene? You know, there are basically sort of a couple of areas I'd like to, to highlight. So firstly, you know, a big point, part of that will be support to renewable energy capacity. You know, Mr. Tivari mentioned that seventy percent of the cost of green hydrogen as of today. And you're quite, quite right that, you know, bringing down that cost further will be really important towards making it competitive. And we see the potential here in India, you know, with all the resources that you have. This is an area where we've invested quite a lot already, together with partners like the State Bank of India and Irida. And you know, we are a project based bank. So we look at really the underlying projects and you know, where is it economically feasible? So we really look forward to really digging into which projects can we support in order to contribute to the, the hydrogen mission. And we're talking to a number of agencies and public sector organizations about that. We also, I say this because we have Tata here of course, but we can also engage with the private sector. And you know, I know there are a number of big players here in India who, who, you know, we're open to talking to. Of course, you know, it's, it's not good enough just to engage on the renewable energy, which we all, you know, know and are getting better at doing. But you know, support some of these pilot projects. And I think, you know, you were quite right that we can't just talk about pilot projects. It's an industry that's moving so quickly. We need to get to scale. How do we do that? I'm not a technical expert, but I think this idea of, of hubs is really something important here to achieve the scale. Because I think it's something that is so complex that you really need to be able to come together, make some strategic choices. A number of factors were mentioned, you know, the proximity to ports, to fertilizer factories, you know, to the, to these main use cases are very, very important. And I think coming together and bringing the different players together, both the private and public sector around that can, can really be a powerful tool to, to really make this happen. And again, you know, we have been talking initially to MNRE and to the public sector, but of course, the private sector is going to play a really important role here. And I think the role of the public sector is very much to catalyze that and to support the pieces of infrastructure that are common to everyone. And you know, EIB, we're here to partner really on either side, you know, depending on, on where the needs are. Another area to mention of course is knowledge sharing and advisory and technical assistance. I think today's presentation was, was a great example. It's a very new industry. I mean, it's been around, I don't know, you, you mentioned seventeen something. It's been around for, for centuries potentially, but it's only very recently kind of coming into the mainstream. And even my own technical experts, I can share, you know, a year ago, we're quite skeptical that this is something that could ever be properly scaled up. And now no one is skeptical anymore. We're all learning on our feet. So of course, you know, we have our own advisory services and we work very closely with other partners. So for instance, Germany, I know GIZ in particular and also the Danish have engaged a lot with MNRE. And we hope to sort of be a part of that. We have an MOU, we're hoping to work on with, with the Germans. So we hope to do our best on, on providing support there and also taking some of that expertise back to the operations we're doing in Europe. Because I think we're, we're all very much learning here. So I think those are just a few areas. There's obviously a lot to do and I think you mentioned a lot of the, the pieces that need to be done on, on the Indian side. For us as well, we need to do our own homework predominantly on risk taking because we're a bank and that's what we're here for. And I think we need to get better because it's a new industry at assessing those risks, how to assess the bankability of these projects. You know, and where are the good gambles? You know, Vice President, when he was here, he said very clearly, some of these enterprises, it looks amazing on paper, but some of this is going to fail. And it's, it's our job as financiers to, to really try and pick the good bets, but also to accept that some of it isn't going to work out. And we need to figure out how to make the right financing structures to allocate that risk. Where do we perhaps need to bring in some risk absorption, potentially working together with, you know, the European Commission? That's something we're doing elsewhere to really make sure that the finances is flowing to the, the right places, to get behind this, to make it work. Of course, MNRE and NITI AYOG are playing a really important role in coordinating and taking this forward. There are a number of areas. The PLI scheme, how that's going to work in practice, you know, potentially whether they're going to be purchase obligations. Also, I think there was a nice bit in the, the hydrogen mission also on skills. And, and, and that's something that I think is very important. It's somewhere where we're, I think we're engaging elsewhere in Africa and potentially could be something we, we, we could even support. And then finally, of course, you know, so much coordination needed, so many different ministries, so many different players involved. Again, I think this idea of hubs can be something that can, you know, help to, not to solve the problem, but you know, make it easier to talk to each other. But you know, still there will be a lot of work for NITI AYOG, for MNRE and also for private sector organizations and for private sector companies coming, coming together. So you know, we recently joined the Indian Hydrogen Alliance, but I know there are other sort of groups that, that are bringing that together and I think this is, this is really important. I think even the private sector players, everyone only can learn, can, can benefit by learning from each other. So I'll, I'll stop there. Those are just a few points from my side that I think are important. But you know, we're very excited about this sector and really hope that we'll be able to support.
Thank you. Thank you, Nina Fenton. You have rightly provided the perspective of the financial institutions. And also thanks for your intention of supporting the RE power capacity installment. So that's the, I think the, as Mr. Prakash has mentioned, the seventy percent cost goes to the, the electricity in the entire value chain and the balance of plant takes about thirty percent. So that's a really a critical area. So I'll be posing just So I'll be posing just two questions from my side to the, both the panelists. And then I'll open up for the question answer from the audience. So just one question to Mr. Prakash. The, you know, the, you mentioned about the green hydrogen, the first, the definition part. And the second aspect is how to make available this firm power at a low cost? So what should be the model? Government is also coming out with the banking policies. They have put up the open access also free for some kind till a certain period. So how you oversee on those aspects to reduce the cost of electricity? That's a critical component of your entire value chain. Over to you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for this question. If we, if somebody want to analyze the cost of power when it is being generated from the RE plant and when it is reaches to real, real hydrogen generation plant. So, so depending on state and state regulation, the cost changes by maybe thirty, forty percent, okay? Suppose you are generating RE RTC at RE plant end at four rupees. Then when it is reaching that hydrogen generation plant and say if my hydrogen generation plant is in Jharkhand or Maharashtra. So lot of charges are applicable like ISTS charges. So ISTS charges, we can say that is waived up. But ISTS losses, in any case, somebody has to pay. Then, then STU charges, STU losses, then wheeling losses and wheeling charges. Because if you'll see in country, there is only one, what, to my knowledge, there is only one plant which is directly C2 connected. I means generation plant is also C2 connected and user plant is also C2 connected. So if we can enable transmission infrastructure so that generation plant as well as hydrogen generation plant, both are connected to C2 infrastructure. So all these STU losses, RSTU charges, wheeling charges and wheeling losses can be avoided or can be eliminated. This is one way. And other ways, even state government is also trying to waive off these charges. But only challenge is suppose state government is putting STU network, okay? So somebody has to pay for cost recovery of that STU transmission network. You cannot say that government will put and some, from somewhere that capex is, has to come. And then only you can make the, those type of network. So one thing is that how we can minimize this power transmission charge from renewable asset plant, renewable plant to the hydrogen generation plant? This is one area where a government is working. It is also covered in the green hydrogen policy document. But since power being concurrent subject, so of course, state has to also formulate their strategy so that these charges can be minimized or can be avoided. This is one area. Other area is that how new technological intervention can take place so that we can reduce the cost of renewable power generation itself, okay? Lot of RR can be really do some technical breakthrough in developing some technology for energy storage. Because here we are talking of round-the-clock electricity. So suppose today, somebody has to supply round-the-clock electricity of one megawatt. Then probably he has to put a three to four megawatt of renewable capacity. Then he will be able to provide one megawatt RE RTC solution at eighty percent CUP. So of course, you are putting four time on renewable capex. And there is lot of curtailment and all those things. So if we have a very cost-effective energy storage solution, what we are talking of, long-duration energy storage solution, flow batteries, pump hydro, hydrogen storage. So if there could be some breakthrough in this technology and if we can reduce the cost of RTC power at generation end itself, then only we can achieve the required target. If you'll see the Bloomberg forecast for, for RE RTC power be, if you, if you, they, in fact, they give the forecast for green solar and different power sources. And if you'll try to estimate that what could be the RE RTC tariff after ten year? So there it comes to two rupees per unit. But, but how two rupees per unit will be achieved? Because if you'll see recent past, then RE tariff has increased also because of some or other region. So of course, something is required on renewable technology itself to reduce the cost. And second part, what thirty, forty percent cost element is there for transmission? So lot of work needs to be done in that area, sir.
Thank you. As a follow-up question, do you think that the decentralized mode kind of RE power will also help reducing the cost of green hydrogen? And how the banking will play a major role in this?
Yeah, sir, of course, banking is going to play a role. But only challenge is that if you'll see the banking policies what is being released by state. So there are some restriction about withdrawal of power also. Because that says, suppose there are two peak in Orissa, okay, morning and evening. So banking policy says that you will not be able to withdraw the power during peak hours. So what it means that I need to start and stop my hydrogen generation plant twice a day. And I can operate maximum say up to sixty-six percent. I, I will around six, five, six, seven hour, you will not be able to take power from the grid. And at that time, your renewable energy generation is also not there. But sir, having said that, what I believe, whatever analysis I have done, that if we are able to reduce the cost of electrolyzer, so that what is happening that since now the cost of electrolyzer is very high. So that's why we want to operate these electrolyzer for maximum hour in a year, like eight thousand, four hour, eight thousand. But suppose I am able to bring down the cost of electrolyzer to five hundred, six hundred entire plant cost, what we call capex. Then in that case, maybe at around fifty, sixty percent time operation also, I, I will be able to optimize the cost of green hydrogen. And then certainly in those type of cases, banking is going to play a big role, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Prakash. Now I turn to Nina, you know, the, the lot had been talked about the cost of finance to the, the clean project or the RE project. And that is true also. If you, I mean, I'm just citing the example of India. In certain states, they have a very good potential of radiation, solar irradiation. The state like Rajasthan, Madhya Pradesh, Tamil Nadu and part of Madhya Pradesh. If these states, that location, if the cost of capital is reduced, then we are able to compete in terms of the RE power with the other parts of the world like Chile. They have, I mean, their cost of power is just less than rupees, similarly with the Middle East countries. So is there any thinking from your side that the long tenor, the low-cost finance is made available to these projects?
Yes, thank you for the question because you know, that's really what we, we try, we aim to provide is, is long tenor. I mean, so twenty to twenty-five years, low-cost finance. I, I think, you know, with reference to the discussion here, there are two things. So firstly, you mentioned the states. So you know, EIB, in theory, we can lend directly to, to states, we call it sub-sovereign. But of course, you know, in India, and quite rightly so, you know, the federal also, also has a say there. And generally would charge, you know, some kind of a guarantee fee usually. So I don't know, I think that is in the hands obviously of the government. And I think, you know, fiscal prudence is also something that we very much support. So I don't think we would, we would comment is it right or wrong? But of course, you know, that is a factor in, in determining the cost of capital to the states. The second part, and I think this is more, it's homework for us, potentially together with the government and other partners, is the cost of hedging. Because of course, you know, we are bringing in, our money is coming in in euros and dollars. It was very, very cheap in euros and dollars. Now, of course, the cost is going up even for us as a triple A rated institution, but it's still quite low. But of course, you know, then if it's for domestic use, you face a cost of hedging. I think that's one reason why the green hydrogen can be quite attractive because there should be some export potential there, which, you know, then there will be some natural hedge. But I think, you know, at the G20, I expect there will also be a lot of discussion about these hedging costs. Because I think that is something that can, can really open up. Because there is, even though rates have gone up, there are large pools of capital, you know, that are out there and are looking for, you know, they're not necessarily looking for a huge return, they want to invest in something that's, you know, sustainable finance. So I think it's a very pertinent point.
As a follow-up question, you know, there had been a discussion about the skill set and the capacity building, you know? So even in, some of the sectors have been put on the priority sector lending. But the capacity building in some of the financial institutions are still lacking. So is there any global thinking over this that sometimes banks don't find very convincing enough, I mean, the, the, I mean, they're not able to comprehend the project. And so they, sometimes we face issue also and they are not able to extend finance for those projects too. So building capacity of the financial institution, do you think this could be also a major area for discussion?
Yes, absolutely. And I mean, I think, I think this is normal. I mean, you know, for me, in India, we are used to working with, with State Bank of India, for example, and IRIDA. And these are institutions, they have very skilled staff who really know what they're doing. And you know, in solar, of course, you know, it, it took a while to get on top, but now they're really there. So of course, for green hydrogen, there will have to be the capacity building. And also, you know, I mentioned the building of sort of guidelines and tools, you know, for, for assessing. Because I'm not a technical expert either, but assessing a green hydrogen project is different to assessing a standard solar project. So we have to keep upskilling ourselves and, and supporting our partners to do that.
Thank you, Nina. So now this is open for question from the audience. Please identify yourself and then.
On the other hand, sir, we are talking about hydrogen adoption. Both these are contradicting each other because on the hydrogen, we are talking about hard-to-abate sectors where we would be preventing the generation of carbon. And in the other segment, we are generating carbon and capturing it for utilization of, in some other of the use cases. So both these going together, how you see as contradicting each other?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll answer. In fact, these are not contradicting to each other, these are complementing to each other, okay? Because what we say that, because you see presently, what is the challenge in carbon capture today? You have to be mindful and understand what is the biggest challenge in carbon capture. I can capture the carbon, but I'm, I don't have any gainful utilization of carbon. That is the biggest challenge. And that's why if you see globally, some pilot project has been installed for carbon capture. At one end, they are capturing carbon and CO2 and other end, they are again releasing to the atmosphere. Because they are not able to really find the gainful utilization of carbon. What we are talking that you see, hydrogen is not going to hundred percent decarbonize the industry. Let us be very careful because it is, it will be one of the energy vector for decarbonizing hard-to-abate sector. There will be some carbon capture, carbon emission still in those industries. And what we can do that we can capture those carbon, utilize green hydrogen and product, produce green chemicals like sustainable, or sustainable aviation fuel. With that way, what we are trying to do that we are not increasing the carbon intensity into the atmosphere, that is what.
But right now, let's see, let's take an example for ammonia plant. So what it does, it takes, it takes the methane, through the HABR process, they separate the natural gas and carbon. They utilize this carbon in the end process of urea generation.
Yeah.
And through nitrogen, they generate hydrogen.
So, so that's what, that's what I said in my talk also. Using green hydrogen in existing urea plant is not possible. Whatever green hydrogen use, is being talked for fertilizer sector is not for the urea. That is for other NPK type of fertilizer because where CO2 is not required that quantity. What is happening that whatever is present urea making process in that whatever CO2 you are emitting by steam methane reforming for making hydrogen, that CO2 is again being utilized for making urea. So in case if somebody want to go for green urea making, what, what will be required? You have to put the green hydrogen generation plant. And you have to also put carbon capture in existing some other industrial unit. Say, say, please imagine that what type of carbon emission is taking place from power industry? I explained that it is forty-two percent of the total emission. If I'll take the CO2 emission of one five hundred megawatt unit, then whatever is the different, you know, industries today also using CO2 for different applications. So one five hundred megawatt unit can cater to maybe half of the state requirement because there is very less use. And, and CO2 emission for these, from these thermal unit is very huge, very huge. So what, what, green urea is being talked there, what, what will be done? That carbon will be captured from some existing industrial unit, say, say steel making process, say from thermal power plant. And they may, they will be making green hydrogen. And then with that, they will be making urea or some whatever you want to make. You can, you can make urea, sustainable aviation fuel, methanol, anything you can make.
Let me put a different perspective, what Mr. Prakash has mentioned. You know, the, the decision to go about the carbon capture utilization stories or the green hydrogen, et cetera, is depending upon the country's perspective. See, as of now, globally, globally, this is the case that more than eighty percent is still, I mean, we are using fossil-based energy resources. Consider the case of India, we are of the same order. At the same time, we have huge reserves of coal also, right? So how efficiently, efficiently you can utilize that, that's the one question. And the other question is also, we have taken conscious call for the clean energy transition and the net zero by twenty seventy or so. Coal still remain in our system even beyond twenty forty or forty-seven or so. So how, how cleanly we can utilize this coal reserve, that's the question. So utilizing the, the process of, of carbon capture and implementing to some of the sectors like the power, the thermal, thermal power or even the other industry like cement, et cetera, where you can capture and utilize it. So almost you're eighty to ninety percent kind of carbon you are capturing from the processes. And you, through utilization of that process and then going towards the hydrogen production through a different, either you convert into methanol or different kind of products. From there you can go for the hydrogen production. Since you are not capturing hundred percent of your CO2, partly it is left. So that's why the different colors here I mentioned, blue, so you call it as a blue hydrogen. But this is a cleaner part of your entire, so the entire, I mean, globe is working towards the clean pathway of using the energy resources. So that's the perspective here.
Sir, I also would like to know your views on two aspects. So first one is the, like, already you have shared in your presentation, like the country is having a major forty percent of the carbon emission from the power sector. But still the green hydrogen mission does not focus much on the energy storage in terms of hydrogen. Hydrogen-based energy storage either be, like you have talked about, the generation of renewable energy and generation of hydrogen must be nearby places. So it can be one of the utility grids. And also the, what real estate footprint would be lower than the battery energy storage system. So like, what is the mission right now not focusing on the power sector? Because, because it is one of the vital carbon emitting in the country. Second perspective, I would like to know your views is India, like if we talk about decentralized hydrogen generation, we have a huge bio-waste generation from the remote villages. So right now, if we talk, one of the sustainable modes of transport is electric vehicles. But still it is only concentrated to the tier one cities. If you want some sustainable modes of transport in the other segments of the country. If you want some sustainable modes of transport in the other segments of the country, hydrogen could be one of the option which provides us an opportunity for decentralized generation in the remote areas of the country. So what do you see foresee in the future? Can biomass or bio-waste will be used forward for hydrogen generation?
Yeah, the bio-root has been also factored in in the green hydrogen mission. So it is already there. So that's not a real problem. But what you mentioned about the considering that aspect and then switching over to the mobility part, that the economics still has to be worked out. Because as of now, it is largely we thought that if we go to the large hall transportation, I mean, large segment transportation, particularly trucks, et cetera, that would make more sense rather than going to the smaller section that LMB light motor vehicle or four-wheelers kind of thing. So that is the perspective, but it depends upon the country's perspective, how they are promoting their own clean energy mission and how they are factoring the mobility as one of the solution for the green hydrogen to be considered as a as fuel for the their mobility solution. But we are largely focusing as of now the electric vehicle in the four-wheelers section. On the larger segment still, we are trying to go on the gas base or maybe the fuel cell, et cetera. And that's the study. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, so regarding energy storage, hydrogen as energy storage, I have already explained because you see, if you see the round trip efficiency, suppose you are putting one unit of energy in battery, you are getting point nine. But in case of hydrogen, you are putting one unit of electricity and then you are getting point three-three. So round trip efficiency is very low. Having said that, battery can cater to the smaller duration storage requirement. When you will require intra-day storage, when your grid will have sixty, seventy percent RE power, in those cases, maybe intra-day storage or seasonal storage may be required, maybe not in India, maybe some other country where where day timing and night time changes and sun solar intensity also is also seasonal type of thing. So there, this hydrogen storage will come. If you see the cost economics, then it will take time really, it will take time to compete with other energy storage solution because there are other mechanical storage system which are being developed and they are claiming to achieve the efficiency of fifty to sixty percent. Here I am talking of thirty-three and even if I am increasing the fuel cell and electrolyzer efficiency also, then it will never cross fifty percent. But there are some other solution where you can get more than fifty percent as and today also as long duration storage. So probably I'll use renewable energy and use those technologies for long-duration energy storage rather than going for hydrogen. And hydrogen requirement for power sector may come maybe after two thousand, around thirty-five, forty, sometime like that. That's what it is being projected.
But it is all dependent upon the economics, I mean, that's that will drive the. But Nena, you wanted to make some point?
Yeah, I I just wanted to say, you know, very quickly, I think these gentlemen both speak from much more technical expertise than me. But you know, as an economist, what I see here is, you know, we're not in the situation of kind of industrial revolution that steam is going to replace everything else. We're in a situation where we will need a bunch of different solutions for different problems and especially in a country as huge and diverse as India. You know, maybe if we're talking about a small country, we're based in Luxembourg, maybe you could say, okay, hydrogen can do everything perhaps. But in India, you're going to have this diversity between different places. You're going to need a bunch of different solutions. And I think also what's important there is is innovation. You know, because some of the use cases for hydrogen are not really going to work out because we're going to bet on a technology and the economics isn't going to work and others will. So we need to make sure that we're allowing for that and we're allocating the right kind of risk capital to to make sure that those kind of more innovative solutions come through. Someone will, some will win and some some will lose.
Okay, Nena, any other question from the audience? Yeah. Can you, somebody give mic to him?
Satish here for Melanti. In Tiwari's presentation, so if I heard correctly, he mentioned one kilogram of hydrogen production request ten liters of water, he has mentioned. Ah, okay, nine liters of water. Right. So we are trying to keep the hydrogen production as close as to the consumption point, just to avoid the logistics and other things. That's what we are primarily trying to do. In that case, already these refineries would be consuming more of water and other things. How this hydrogen thing will affect and then what will be the alternate solution to avoid this? Because in solar plants also, we see for the cleaning of modules, there has been a lot of concerns around water consumption. So then this much of consumption is going to happen with reference to hydrogen production. How, what is the best solution to take care of?
Already a lot of talk is going on about putting of the scent, like when we are talking of hydrogen hub concept where the capacity could go to million metric ton. So there we are also talking because you know, all these hub, what we what is being talked, mostly those are likely to come up in coastal location. And in those location, desalination plant is also being talked. If you'll see the total cost of hydrogen, then of course, water cost is one of the important cost, but that is not that that significant, okay? So people are also talking about desalination plant for using good quality water for hydrogen production. This is one way. Other way is like lot of research is going on. If we can use directly seawater for green hydrogen generation. And if we are able to develop and mature those type of technologies where we can directly use seawater, then that could be also a game changer.
Yeah, can can somebody give mic to this gentleman? The organizer? Either either like.
I am from Jhaskam, Karnataka, a distribution company. Whether public awareness, whether it will support this system, you may please explain.
You mean to say public awareness, whether, I mean, is required or not? I mean, that's the question. Definitely it is required because any new see, any new products if comes in the market, you get lot of advertisement in the TV, et cetera. So that it is everybody gets sensitized. Similarly, in this case also, I think the the kind of interactions, whatever within the ministry is happening, I think this should outreach to the all the different organizations and holding the regional workshop, different kind of, I mean, the workshop like this would also be equally important. But reaching out to the state level, sensitizing them, then identifying identifying the potential areas of opportunities, I mean, I mean, those kind of workshop is definitely, and this is, this will definitely help in building the entire nations towards the the green hydrogen. Right, 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 right. Certainly, certainly. And that's the, that's the, I think, more role towards the Bureau of Energy Efficiency. They have been playing a major role and partly there is one more organization, Petroleum Conservation Research Association. I mean, these are two agencies have been towards the more towards the awareness and bringing efficiency into the system and all those. No, you are very, you are very right, you are very right.
Like what, et cetera, they are wasting, they don't know about this, they don't aware of it.
No, no, very good suggestion.
Yeah. So I would like to supplement that when we are talking of net zero and decarbonization, so there we are talking of all three type of CO2 emission. One is scope, one CO2 emission, what it means that whatever energy we are producing, how much CO2 we are emitting and how we can abate those CO2. Another is scope two. I mean, at user and how we can optimize the uses of electricity so that that is also one way of CO2 abandonment. And scope three is like when we are processing the fuel, suppose I'm doing the mining for coal. So our intent is also to minimize the use of energy, to minimize CO2 emission from scope three also. So for decarbonization of power sector or energy sector, we have to concentrate on all these three scope of CO2 emissions. You have very rightly said, sir.
So we have heard a lot about from the two eminent panelists. So now I'm just bringing close to the session. So the vision for the before the country is to become the hubs of production as well as the export for the green hydrogen. And we have already announced the policy. And whatever support is required from the government side, this has come as a one phase of policy. But but any suggestion, any problems emerging out of the while implemented, because this is a this is a learning process. We get the feedback, we may revisit our policy, we can modify to make suitable for the for the for the developer or the or the companies to come forward and install the green hydrogen projects within the country. I mean, that's the broad objectives we have been taking it forward. But let me thank Mr. Chandra Prakash and the organizers and of course, Nena Fentan for their valuable time for taking part of this decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you to our speakers, moderator and Mr. Jyothilal joined virtually. So now I request Mr. Reggie Kumar Pillai, President ISGF for the vote of thanks and giving a token of thanks to our speakers.
First of all, thank you very much for all of you to join. Although the audience is small, but they are knowledgeable, who asked, engaged in the deliberation. I like to present few points about this. So green hydrogen has become the buzzword, everybody is into it. But as Mr. Jyothilal is, is he already connected or yes, left? Yes, he said about sixty million tons of hydrogen is produced and consumed globally. Almost all of it is today produced at the point of consumption. Nothing much is stored, transported. But as Mr. Tiwari has said, to store it or to transport it in an economically feasible way, it has to be made liquid. But the moment you talk about liquid, it is not economically feasible way. It's two hundred and fifty-three degree minus two fifty-three degrees centigrade. It's not impossible, but it is too expensive to have the indoor wall, pipe, tanker, et cetera for doing that. So not many discussion in last three, four years, this has become a very big topic globally. Everybody talking about big numbers. Today, I believe that almost financial cross are done for almost two hundred gigawatt of electrolyzers. And you heard again from Mr. Tiwari's presentation, you need platinum, iridium, all those rare materials. According to the current production capacity of total electrolyzer in a year is about four, three to four gigawatt only being produced. The main limitation, you can build big factories which are, many people in India wanting to do that. But where is this platinum and iridium going to come from? It's very limited material, but you need that. So it may take fifty years to supply the electrolyzers which are already, the projects declared and financially closed projects. So that is one part. Well, this is an engineering problem, we'll find an engineering solution. I'm hopeful of that. But then what is the cost? And how are we going to ship it and transport it and export it? There are no many discussion about it. We need more and more of discussion about that part of it, which is not happening anywhere. I'm glad that Mr. Tiwari brought those points. Another very interesting point I like to bring to the attention particularly of Mr. Rajnath Ram is the natural hydrogen. Hydrogen was discovered by the same Russian scientist Mendeleev who made the, what is that, what is that table there? Yeah, Mendel, yeah, so so periodic table. He discovered, he claims from natural, but nobody else believed him because all other places where we could see hydrogen, it is in a form, it is in some chemical form. Water, it is mixed with oxygen, some other place in some other chemical. So but there there been, this is in sixteen hundred or seventeen hundred. In last two hundred years, there are at least five, six scientists said that yes, natural hydrogen exists in the crust of earth, which can be, they have come across. But nobody bothered because it was too expensive to explore and find out it. And natural gas exploration was easy, oil was easy, it was more, so nobody done it. Very interesting episode which has happened about ten years ago in Mali, the West Africa Mali. One person who was drilling for water and some gas started coming. He had no clue what it is as you heard repeatedly, it's colorless, odorless gas, pestless gas. So although McKinsey did the mischief of giving the colors. So it's a small water boring which he has done and the gas started coming. He asked lot of people in Mali, nobody could. Then some Canadian company was doing some work in the offshore there, next country. They came, collected the sample, they found out it is ninety-eight percent pure hydrogen. And then they invested in a IC engine. And from two thousand twelve onwards, last more than ten years, they are generating electricity from that hydrogen. It's continuously, the whole village is powered with that. So this incident been caught here and there often. And last two years, lot of research happening in different places and they believe that there is natural hydrogen on the crust of earth, which perhaps if we are able to extract, it could be much cheaper than the the current process of electrolyzer-based generation through electricity. And another example which people are citing is that shale gas. Shale gas in America was discovered a long time back, nobody bothered because it was expensive to get that. But when the actual crude oil price, when they go seventy dollar, eighty dollar, hundred dollar, so at that price, shale exploration became economically viable. So in two thousand eight, two thousand ten, lot of investment went into shale exploration and the indoor oil industry dynamics got changed. USA from an net importer has become an exporter of oil. So that kind of a hydrogen, natural hydrogen discovery, natural hydrogen discovery cannot be ruled out. If that happens in five years, ten years, the billions or trillions of dollar which will be invested on electrolyzer-based hydrogen generation will be a very, very big risk. We need to look at both side as the technology evolves. And most of the people who are currently involved in the hydrogen, if you recollect, we had given an approach paper in twenty twenty January, twenty-one January to NIDIAIO. We argued that the mission should be housed in Ministry of Petroleum, Petroleum and Natural Gas, not in MNR, not in Ministry of Power because they have no, none of the organization under MNR, MOP has ever handled hydrogen. Ever, handling hydrogen is a different thing, it's not like handling coal or handling electricity, it is different. Yeah. So and and whether you believe it or not, one of the largest hydrogen generation plant in Asia is just few hundred kilometers away from Delhi, it's in Nangal, Nangal, National Fertilizer Nangal. That's one of the largest. And when was it set up? Nineteen fifty-six, inaugurated by the then Prime Minister Nehru. So it's one of the, even today, one of the largest, that is SMR, SMR process. So so there are organizations who have experience of producing hydrogen, handling it and using it. But they should be brought on the forefront of the hydrogen mission. So even now, I believe that in the mission framework, which Mr. Tiwari explained, thank you that you went through the mission document quite well. So I also read twice before for writing the introduction of this agenda for this. You have byhearted it and presented the whole thing in few slides. So you have a technical committee and also make sure that the mission director comes from a technical background who will be there for at least five years, not a bureaucrat who comes for one year and steer. who will be there for at least five years, not a bureaucrat who comes for one year and mysterious. Another person who ask what is green hydrogen, does it really look green? So this kind of pitfalls need to be addressed and at the beginning itself. And wish all the best for the hydrogen mission. We hope that it will be successful. India will generate that six-hundred-thousand jobs and five-hundred.
Hundred billion.
Hundred billion, yeah, investment in allied sectors. And a big thank you to Mr. Rajnath Ram for being part of this session today. And in fact, only suggestion only, we kept hydrogen as a parallel session in ISUW. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for your constant support for ISDF activities. And thank you to Mr. Tiwari for being part of it and making a very excellent presentation, detailed presentation covering the entire technical part of it. And to Ms. Nina Fenton, although invited you quite late, you came and given the perspective from the European Investment Bank and EIB's willingness to fund projects in India. Thank you very much, very welcome. We need all investment from all around the world. And as I say, countries like India, when we get into doing all this, the size matters. So the price, global price comes down. So look at the LED bulb. LED bulb used to cost a few dollars, four, five dollars. And now it costs a few cents because we've been buying it in hundreds of millions. And it is benefiting the whole world, not just India. Same with solar panels. Solar prices came down because India, China, where big volumes can be given, we started investing, so the prices came down. So a big thank you to all of you and all the participants in this session. Thank you very much.
Requesting Reggie sir to handle the vote of thanks to our panelists. Mr. Rajnath Ram, thank you so much, sir. Mr. CP Tiwari, thank you so much, sir, for joining. And Ms. Nina Fenton, thank you so much, ma'am. Requesting panelists and Reggie sir for a group picture. Thank you so much, thank you so much, everyone for joining.